You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the April 18th, 2024 meeting of the Michigan City Commission for Women. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good afternoon, everyone, and everyone, welcome to the Michigan City Commission for Women, our meeting, April 18th. I'm gonna begin with, as I'm calling to order, beginning this meeting, I'm also gonna go ahead and do the roll call. So if we can just say present or whatnot, if you're here, Angela Carter.
Present.
Keisha Ward. Kiana Edwards.
At present.
Laura Wink. Sarah Jones.
Present.
Nyla Williams.
Present.
Linda Conley.
Present.
And Charlene.
Present.
Okay, thank you. So the only two we have absent is Lori and...
There she is. She's in the back.
Who's Keela?
Keela. Or Keisha, I'm sorry, it's Keisha. Keisha is present. Okay, good. Do you want to read those or are you gonna read them?
I can read them.
We'll have the approval of the minutes and Charlene is gonna go ahead and read those minutes for us.
So call to order President Jackie Jones called meeting to order at 5:34 PM. Roll call Jackie Jones, Lori Wink, Sarah Jones, Keisha Ward, Angela Carter, and Nyla Williams were present, as well as I am, so my name is missing. Absent Linda Conley and is it Kina?
Kiana.
Kiana Edwards. Minutes of February 15, 2024, read by Secretary Lori Wink and approved with amendments. Treasurer's Board Treasurer Shar Lipsey reported a balance of 15,103. She will bring 2023 quarterly ledger reports from previous treasurer Bonnie Schaaf to next commission meeting. Training for Michigan City Commission for Women, handouts, parliamentary motions guide based on Robert's rule of order, Commission for Women ordinance. Available training Jackie Jones will meet with Mayor Angie Nelson-Dight to identify possibilities. Unfinished business, March 8th, International Women's Day Inspire Inclusion Event, 123 registered, 150 seats filled. Jackie acknowledged good work of the subcommittee members and positive feedback. Council Rep Daisy Lee was applauded for bringing 10 eighth graders to the event. Finances for the event, motion approved to pay $500 to catered Kia Can Cook for 50 additional lunches. Christina Isabel will submit additional receipts to be paid. Minority Health Coalition acknowledged for co-hosting and cost-sharing the event. Surveys slash feedback, 16 evaluation forums return suggesting programs involving youth, seniors, personal finances, commissioner suggestions for next year included securing a larger venue, streamlining the registration process, emphasizing need to RSVP, issuing lunch tickets to those who registered not to unregistered, using event bribe for invitations, rotating caterers. Subcommittee slash roles, August 26th, Women's Equity Day, subcommittee members Lori Wink, Kiana Edwards, Nyla Williams, and Shar Lipsey will coordinate with League of Women Voters. Social media point person Sarah Jones maintains Facebook, Shar will serve as backup. Fundraiser slash grant research slash sponsors Jackie Jones. Legislative report Shar Lipsey. New program ideas infant mortality, youth health concerns, obesity and diabetes, education on health insurance, needs of seniors, transportation to medical appointments, inclusion in community, et cetera. Shar Lipsey suggested aligning our priorities with those of Mayor Angie Nelson-Dight. Annual report to be held in the fall. City Council liaison comments Daisy Lee said she is excited to take part in the Women's Commission. Commissioners comments Shar Lipsey, shared city council representative Nancy Mouldenhauer's compliments about the excellent annual report presentation to the council by Christina Isabel, outgoing president Jackie Jones, current president. Nyla Williams handed out flyers promoting upcoming free programs, fit-together, a family-centered approach to good health and wellness, and fan out diabetes, a faith-based church diabetes initiative. Public comments there were none, meeting adjourned at 6:44 PM.
Thank you for reading the minutes. Any amendments needed to...
Said that her name was left off.
Oh, yeah. I just had...
Present, so that'll just be...
Yeah, I had two and that was, I was mentioned several times in your report but not in the actual attendance.
Okay.
And then just that councilwoman Nancy Mouldenhauer's name was misspelled, but that's the only couple of things, two items I had.
Okay, and I think it was another regarding under the feedback for the luncheon.
Mm-hmm.
I think someone had made mention about a QR code being implemented or something like that.
Okay.
For next year luncheon. Any other?
Was that for the surveys?
Yes, for the surveys.
Okay.
Any other corrections needed? Can we get a motion to approve the minutes?
I mentioned to approve the minutes for last month. My mom, thank you.
I second Charlene.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next we will have the treasurer's report.
How about I read the treasurer's report?
Thank you.
So our balance, I actually was able to make connections with our representative in the controller's office, and so our balance was 15,103 and 4 cents. So the 4 cents was accurate last month. We've requested one disbursement which we approved last week for the caterer, the Kia Bonds, for 500. We had no income and so our balance currently as of this month is 14,603 and 4 cents.
Six, 14,600?
603, 603 and 4 cents.
Thank you.
Is that the total that, because in the minutes said other reimbursements will be submitted, have those been submitted or is that not?
That's on the business that was to come up. Did you get it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any corrections? Okay, can we make a motion to receive this report, the treasurer's report?
So moved.
Oh, did she? I didn't hear you.
She said so moved.
Okay, second, anyone second it?
Second.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next we have unfinished business and that's where we're gonna talk about the reimbursement. Christina, the Christina, is it Isabel's?
Yes.
Isabel. Christina submitted some receipts and the total that Christina should be reimbursed is 254 and 41 cents, and that is from the International Women's Day. So she had a receipt from Gordon Food Services Store, which is 84 and 98 cents, Office Depot, which is 23 and 83 cents, and another receipt from Office Depot at 145 and 60 cents. The total is 254 dollars and 41 cents is submitted by Christina. And I have the receipts here and I will pass them along to Charlene. And also, this is a printout regarding the lunches as well. Okay? So I need a motion to go ahead and approve to reimburse Christina for 254 dollars and 41 cents.
I'm move that we approve the reimbursement for Christina.
Thank you. I need a second, please.
I'll second the motion.
Angela's seconding the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is Women Equality Day, and that is to take place in August. So the update on that regarding that, I am still pending a conversation with, her name is Linda Lancaster, I believe, is it Linda Lancaster? She's the president of the women's, is it the women's?
League of Women's Voters.
League of Women's Voters.
Voters.
Voters. So she's the president and I did speak with her briefly, she was out of town and we were due to have a meeting, but I haven't heard, you know, back from her. So I will reach back out to her this week because I think we need to really know what's taking place. I do know that Kiana and Nyla and Lori has agreed to be on the subcommittee along with them, to work along with them for that event, but we kinda wanna know what they would want us, what role they want us to play and how we're gonna do this as a joint effort, if it's a joint effort, and what is actually needed from us. So again, as soon as I talk with her, then I can give you all more feedback and I will probably make a call to Kiana, Nyla, and Lori before we even have the next meeting. Okay? So unfortunately, that's all I can share with you regarding that. Secretary tasks is the next on the agenda and we kinda briefly talked about that. Lori would unfortunately, unfortunately Lori would be out for a couple of meetings, so we will need a backup for secretarial task. And Ms. Linda agreed to assume that role as an alternative secretary, except for next meeting, is that correct, Ms. Linda?
Correct.
And then Sarah, God bless you, Sarah would, can you take that on when Ms. Linda is absent?
Yes.
Okay, so we have that together, so any questions for the business part of the meeting? Anyone wanna implement anything regarding the business meeting before we introduce our guest speaker?
No? No questions?
Okay, well, I'm honored to present the speaker for this evening. Her name is Erica Boyd and she is the CEO and founder for E-Marie Project, Generational Transformation. So she's gonna share with us tonight what her organization is about and how it can empower women and just give us an insight regarding that. And so we really appreciate you coming this evening to share with us regarding your organization. So we pass everything over to you.
I appreciate the invite, so I'm not gonna take a glee once in this company. So I just wanna start off saying I am E-Marie and then I wanna have my... So E-Marie is a women's program mentorship program for young girls between the ages of 12 and 18 and young women 19 to 27. And what the program is just in a whole is to encourage women to live a life of prosperity, finding out what their purpose is, helping them to be attracted to integrity and effective communication, as well as being resilient. And that is also helping bring them to the light, and the light represents leadership, inspiration, transformation, and empowerment. So through that, we have 101, we have focus groups, and we have workshops for the young ladies and the girls. And the whole idea of E-Marie is based off my life. A mentor came in my life and it transpired into general transformation. I was a high school dropout, I had four kids by the age of 20, I was a single mom the majority of their lives, and a mentor came into my life and she told me I was gonna be a lifelong learner, and she was absolutely true. To this day, I'm still learning after 24 years, I still love being a student, and I wanna give that back to my community, and not just this community, but whoever God sends my way. I wanna have that impact on them as well. So currently, I have 14 girls enrolled and I have four adult women enrolled in my program. I haven't had any soft launch yet, we're trying to figure out the dates on that as well, but right now, my goal is to just be present, serve as I am to serve, and whatever that looks like, it's all God's plan.
That's awesome.
Awesome.
Great.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes.
If there are girls who are interested or young women, how would they get involved?
So I have my QR email where they can get enlisted, they can go to the email right here on the back, you can call me, you can also message me on Facebook, and here's the Facebook link right here as well.
Can you say it out loud so everybody could, you know, hear, maybe read?
So how to get in contact with E-Marie, you can contact me through Facebook at E-Marie, and you can also email me at supportyou@emarie.com. You can also call me at 219-237-9216, random number, haven't memorized yet.
Adult women, you should be involved in...
So I have five.
Five adult women and 14 girls?
Mm-hmm.
They're from the elementary and junior high school?
Yes.
Or middle school now?
So I have, I have a couple, 12, which is like sixth grade, and then most are middle schools.
How often do you meet with them, is it a time like after school, often every day?
Yeah, because this is kinda like new development and I'm going through like a trial basis, kinda like that beta testing.
Yeah.
Most of the girls are in sports, so I work around their time.
Okay. And so you also work with older women as well, right?
I haven't had the opportunity.
Or young women.
To support wisdom, so with young women between the ages of 19 and 27, I'm not excluding any age, you know, if I feel like I have something to offer based in the realm of my program, you know, I'm willing to help. So one of the stipulations is you have to come ready, willing, and able, you know, you have work to do. It's just not, we're gonna sit around and have conversation, you know, I'm gonna give you tools and strategies that you need to apply to your life on a daily basis because that's what ensures growth, is putting in the action.
Yeah. So what type of program do you have set up for the women between the ages of 19 and 27?
So 19 and 27, we start off with journaling because that's important to kinda like journal what your strongholds are, because it's to adopt the mindset of intentionality to help you navigate through those strongholds and release them. So you have to journal, you first have to document what your fears are, what your struggles are, what your challenges are, and then I guide them into turning that around to speak affirmation. I am not fear, you know, fearful of this, you know what I'm saying? Just change the way you think, it changes your speech, it changes your heart, and then it changes your actions. That's the concept that was given to me, I still use it to this day, and it works.
I have a question. So how many people actually work with you with this mentoring the women?
So I have my husband who is John Boyd, he's helping me develop the program, he's an educator. I have my sister-in-law, which is my sister-in-law, her name is Janay McKnight, she's helping me as well as her husband, so we have about, all together, we got about 80-plus years of education, coaching, and consulting background in this program. I have my sister who is Tiana Key, and she also is a business owner, and she's experienced ups and downs as a woman, and she bring a lot to the table as educational tools and strategies.
That's nice.
Are you looking for more people to join your team?
I am.
You are? Okay.
Yes. So the people that I would like to attract, and I'm not trying to exclude too many people, but you have to be humbled, you have to be willing and ready and able to help, however long that is that you wanna come in and be a part of it. I understand that, you know, there's sometimes a limit to that, but you know, I want you to come in with an open mind and saying, hey, I have this to offer, this is my expertise in this area, and I'm willing to help in that specific area. So we're talking about academics, we're talking about healthcare, we're talking about finances, you know, we're talking about just helping women really identify their purpose to prevent them from missing out, because we miss out because we have lacked the knowledge, lacking of the knowledge, and that was me, you know, I'm working, you know, in a factory and a manufacturing, and you know, at the time, I'm like, this is it, I got to do this. And I knew that there was more that I wanted to do, but I had to put my dreams on a backburner and raise my kids, because I was taught that you're gonna raise them, you wanna put a roof over their head, you wanna make sure they're fed, so that was my tunnel vision. I was not feeling in that area, but there was more to it, you know, so now I'm able to go back and share my life story and talk about my educational experience. I have a graduate degree in business administration, I have a bachelor's degree in organizational management, I am certified leadership, certified project management. So I just finished the nonprofit leadership academy with healthcare of LaPorte.
I think they took the care of, right?
Yeah. So I just finished that program and so I've been confident in it, it's just I had to wait for God to just kick me out the door with it.
I have a question. Question. Since we, do you have, do they have, the mentors, do they have to go through a background check since you're working with the children?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a referral process for your organization?
So they'll fill out an application, and then we'll go, I'll go back with my team and review that application, we'll submit the background check to make sure they're fit, and then you'll go through a trial basis, you know, just to see if this is something you wanna do. And I will say my initial contact as I was mentoring, I'm like, whoa, wait a minute, you know, like this is different. So I had to go back and like, okay, I gotta ask these girls and these young women, what is it that you need? You know, what is it that I need to bring to the table to help you? Although I figured it out and wrote out the plan, did the curriculum, did the workshops and everything, but as I'm looking at what I have in place and what they need, it was kind of out of bounds, so I needed to sync. So I have to see what they need first and then go back and create something for them.
I have another question. If I wanna donate, is there, how do I go about doing that?
Yeah, so just was trying to work that out and set that up. I do have a system set up with my bank, so I was trying to do a QR code and I was trying, having some trouble with that. So I do have what we call World Pay, which is simple swipe, so I have electronic pay system, and I can send out the link, and I can also put the link on my Facebook page as well. The, I will have a website coming up, probably in about the next two or three weeks, so that's under construction right now.
Thank you.
And so the donate tab, of course, will be on there.
Appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
How often do you try to meet with the young ladies?
At least once a week.
Once a week?
Mm-hmm.
And where do you meet at again?
Sometimes it's at the middle school and sometimes it's at the library.
Thank you.
That little school, that Barker?
Creger.
Creger? That's the only middle school?
For right now, it's like the Creger, but I haven't tapped into any other schools, I haven't tapped into Barker, and I haven't tapped into the high school either.
Well, I do have a last comment, I don't know how many more questions, but we really appreciate you being here. We've longed to have a mentor in this area. A lot of the women have been not pushed aside per se, but they need that confidence that they've lost. Michigan City has brought a lot of new things to Michigan City such as people, so the ones that are coming into the city, you will be a great mentor for them, so we appreciate you stepping up to the plate, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Yes. So if you need any type of, you know, speakers or like donation of other items too?
Yes.
So like, you know, care packages or things like that, things you can think of, please, you know, share that.
I sure will.
Let me know, okay.
Okay. I'll get everybody's contact before we leave. Got the QR code on my phone, everybody gets an answer tap.
Any other questions or comments? Great job. I'm really happy for you and thank you for doing this because if there's any, yes, there may be other mentoring programs here and there, but it's not enough, and if you can bring something to the table and what you have as a core, having God involved, that you know, sets you apart right there, so you're coming from a good place and I really appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Any other comments, ladies or commissioners? I'm sorry. Any other comments? Erica, I really appreciate you coming out, taking out the time in your schedule and keep up the good work, and again, so along with what Nyla has stated, I'm here, whatever I can, you know, personally donate, I will, time, whatever it is, okay? So again, awesome, amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you again.
Okay.
Thank you.
I also run an interior redesign business and I got a client. I got a, I can't, I'm on a call.
Okay.
I don't wanna leave out, I'm on camera.
Great, if you have to, that's fine, if you have to, if you have to leave, one time you think. Oh, well, we're just gonna finish wrapping up in a little bit, it's up to you. Okay? All right. So city council liaison, Ms. Daisy?
Yes.
Any comments from you today?
Yeah, a couple. Tomorrow is the mayor's gala, and it is sold out with 750 seats, so that is very exciting. And the focus this year is the youth in our community, so all of the donations are gonna be going to different youth programs in our community, so I think that's wonderful.
Awesome.
And then we had a first reading of a, of an ordinance for municipal code to establish general rules for all city boards and commissions, so just a heads up, we're working on an ordinance to ensure that all boards and commissions across the city are following the same guidelines and reporting the same way, submitting the minutes the same way, submitting the agendas the same way in the same time, so just a heads up that that's coming soon, so we can all be on the same page together. And I'll let you know once that's ready to go and we can get on it.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You know, I think you introduced an ordinance with regards to the gun safety?
I did, yeah.
You might wanna share that with the group too?
Sure, okay. So I introduced a resolution on Tuesday at our meeting to, that focuses on gun safety in our community. So it's not taking anything away, but it's our promise as a city that we're gonna do better to secure our guns, especially in homes where there is youth present. So we had a speaker, Emily Hunt, who is actually a city council member in Valparaiso, she works with an organization called Be Smart, and so they focus also on gun safety, and she presented some really terrifying statistics for Indiana specifically about gun violence and accidental gun death from children, even in Portage. Unfortunately, last year, a two-year-old found a loaded and unlocked gun underneath the bed and shot and killed themselves. So this is our city's promise to do better, educate the public on how they can keep their guns safe, especially around children, and Michigan City Police Department has partnered with us, so they already wrote a grant, they're on it, so they already received 100 gun locks that they'll distribute to the public for free. They'll set, they're gonna set up some events in the near future to... to kind of launch it and bring awareness to it. And ideally, we'll work with the school board too so that they can send out information about gun safety and make sure that our students are safe.
Great.
And it passed unanimously on Tuesday, so we're ready to go.
Awesome. Any comments? Questions? Commissioners comments? Anything anyone has to discuss, any upcoming events? You want to announce a couple?
You sure you can say one?
Yeah.
Okay. No, I don't think I talked about, well, we do an Indiana Black Barber Shop that's happening this Saturday.
Okay.
Yeah, so I have a busy weekend. We're going to be in three shops here in Michigan City. Marvelous Cuts, Sharper's Image, and Platinum Designs. Can you hear me, babe? We're going to be in three shops. Marvelous Cuts, Sharper's Image, and Platinum Designs will be there from nine to three. We'll be doing free screenings, blood pressure, blood glucose, and weight. And this is a statewide initiative. So this is the Indiana State Black Barber Shop Health Initiative. That's across, I think, fourteen cities across the state of Indiana. So this is the twelfth annual. So, yeah.
Awesome.
Can you give me that time again? Nine to three. Thank you. And anyone can get screened. Yes, the focus is on men, but we're going to screen women too.
And all three barber shops?
All three barber shops.
The same time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there a post on Facebook about that?
Yeah, I did.
On your page?
Yeah, if you go to the state website, it's out there too. Indiana Black Barber Shop Health Initiative. I think it's I-B-B-H-I dot com. Yeah. That's the state site.
Any other comments or announcements, commissioners? Public comments? We have someone that's present with us. Ms. Fay Moore. Thank you for attending this evening's session.
I'd like to share that there's two resource books at Michigan City City Hall that people can get that discover Michigan City, your guide to dine and shop and recreation, love and entertainment. And then they also have State Representative Pat Boyd's book that for seniors, where you have resources for seniors. I'll pass this around for you guys. And then the Lavezin Art Center is calling all young people. Do you want to paint a mural, plant and grow a community garden, or plan a dance pop-up? Michigan City Placemaking Committee of Neighbors, Leaders, and Folks and the Arts and Residents are excited about Michigan City's future. And so they're looking for area youth to attend a meeting on May 6, on Monday, May 6, at 5:00 PM at the Hope Center to plan different murals to paint around Michigan City, such as the one at the Madely Smert Center on the wall and at the Hope Building. They're going to do another mural at the Hope Center.
Oh, okay. Awesome.
Thank you.
Hey, you're on the Sustainability Commission?
Yes.
Earth Day celebration, is there a?
Yes, Earth Day celebration is May 4 at Cregar Memorial. Or Earth Day, please, if you're interested. They're going to be, the tree board is going to be giving out tree starters again. And they're going to have seeds that you can plant in your gardens and so forth. And Earth Day again is Saturday, May 4. That's the first Saturday in May. And it starts like a, I'm not going to count, I'm going to say.
One to four.
One to four. Thank you. One to four. So please come on and support Earth Day. And they have activities with kids. They're going to have some kind of trail walk, some kind of scavenging hunt. And usually have some type of snacks, food, you know, giveaways.
Let me say it, Cregar Memorial.
Cregar Memorial, that's on Liberty Trail.
The building, Cregar Memorial Park.
On Liberty Trail.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fay.
Thank you.
I'll share one thing, just kind of in conjunction with that, with the Earth Day, because it'll happen before our next meeting. The schools do Better World Day. And so a lot of the times, schools or classes, they work together. They work by themselves, put together different projects that the students, one to do to make the world a better place, like donating to food pantries, doing, you know, cleanups outside. For example, our group of kindergartners, we're putting together birthday boxes for the food pantries with candles, cake mixes, streamers for those few who want to celebrate. So that's just a nice little thing coming up to celebrate. And what is happening others? But our world day is the May 3?
Friday.
I think May 3. And so all of our projects kind of revolve around there. Like last year, one group put together a little food box. Gosh, there was donation drives. It just varies. The kids come up with the ideas and then we try to help them put their ideas into action, whether it's through donations or things we make. Some people make like birdhouses and then they put them in courtyards or it's just really whatever the kids come up with. So it's just a nice thing. So if you see little things popping in around the community, it's their idea.
So that's all Michigan City schools.
Elementary and the middle schools participate. I'm not sure, because I don't think high school does that. And I'm not sure that would be the public schools. So I'm not sure what the other schools do. So if you see anything popping up, feel free to donate.
Okay, anything else? Any more comments before we end the meeting, conclude the meeting? Thank you again, commissioners, for attending this evening's session. I appreciate you all. Looking forward to seeing you for whoever's attending the mayor's ball tomorrow there and at our next meeting. So everyone have a great evening, a safe evening. And thanks again, Ms. Fay, for attending. And thank you, Kevin, for all the hard work you do. So can we motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move re-adjourn.
Second. All in favor? All right, thank you.